Call the meeting to order. Let the record show that this is a regular city council meeting held on July 20th. All members of council are present with the exception of Dottie Hersey, who is traveling on business. The press has been duly notified. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, and if you would today, please remember Chris's father, who passed away recently at the beginning of this month. So if you'd please remember him in your prayer. Thank you very much. Item number one on the agenda is a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission. Item number A is the Fifth Amendment to the Gardendale Development Agreement. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
As required by state law, we have to have a public hearing to, one, create a development agreement as well as any major modifications. The development agreement with Gardendale is, some of you may recall, began with Cornerstone Development and then was subsequently purchased by Drake Capital, forming Drake Gardendale LLC. That development agreement is approaching its sunset. The developer has requested a two-year extension to that development agreement. While the development itself, as far as all the homes and whatnot, won't be completed in that two-year, all their infrastructure, all their requirements, per the development agreement, they feel like would be. So it would be extending this development agreement to, right now it's scheduled to sunset at March 31st of 2016, and this would take it out to March 31st, 2018. And that is what this portion of the public hearing is on.
Are there any public comments in regards to the development agreement extension? Charlie, I realize that this is number seven A on the agenda, and I have my notes on it. Can I ask you those questions now so we can move through the meeting?
Most certainly.
The only changes that I saw on the development agreement are the dates. Is that correct? Nothing else has changed?
That is correct. Nothing else in the development, all prior amendments to the development agreement are all still in full force. Nothing else in the development agreement would be changing other than its sunset date.
Ron, do you have any questions?
No.
Yeah, Charlie, I know you're presenting it and everything, but I ask you, is there anything that you see you would like to see changed in the development?
No, actually, I think we've been very, very pleased with how this development has gone. Drake Gardendale LLC has been just absolutely wonderful to work with. I would wish we didn't own the sidewalks, but that's a platting thing, doesn't have anything to do with the actual agreement itself. So no, this is the only thing that we need to really mess with.
Jen, do you have any questions? Since there are no public comments, I will close that part of the public hearing, and I'll move over to item number one B, which is the rezoning map of tax map number And that's Susan Britt, is what my notes say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This applicant had previously proposed to annex approximately 13.716 acres adjacent to the Cameron Creek Development into the city as a residential patio home product, but due to several legal concerns regarding the variances that were going to be requested to the standardized zoning district, the applicant has amended his request with our input regarding the zoning of the property. And the amended request is to add the subject parcel to the Stonecrest Plan Development with a land use designation of residential high density. The planned use will still be the single-family patio homes. Actually, the PDD already has in it the same requested variances that the applicant was proposing previously, which is a 4,000-square-foot lot and a 40-foot minimum width. So that's already in the Stonecrest PDD for patio homes. So that's why I felt that this was the more appropriate zoning for this. Everything else still remains the same, but we were required to advertise another public hearing since the actual zoning request had changed.
Thank you, Susan. Are there any public comments? Any council comments? Ron? Chris? Jen? No?
Did the Planning Commission review?
I'm going there now.
Okay.
Tom Weir, do you have any comments from the Planning Commission?
Well, just for the record, do need to state that the Planning Commission was in attendance at this joint session. We do have a form or missing department, and we're listening in as well. So myself, I'll have any questions. If others have any questions, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to back up.
Thank you, Tom. No public comments. I'll close this end of the public hearing, and we'll move on to item number two, which is executive session pursuant to section 30-4-70A2 of the South Carolina Code of Discussion Contractual Matters related to the purchase of 2216 Gold Hill Road. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ron Kirby. Any discussion? There being none, call a question. All in favor, saying with saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're in executive session. It'll be quick. Talk amongst yourselves.
Sorry.
We ready? Counsel is back in open session while in executive session. Only the item on the agenda was discussed. No votes were taken, other than to return to open session. Item number three on the agenda, public comments. Are there any public comments? I don't have a, no public comments. Are there any public comments? There being none, closed public comments. Item number four on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Counsel, before you, are the minutes from June 15th. Are there any questions or deletions to those minutes? Hearing none. Those minutes stand approved. Item number five on the agenda is special presentations, and if you don't mind, I'm going to go up to that podium right there.
George, we have a meeting going on. You can't go surfing.
There are many great people in the city of Tegucay, and they make us what we are. One of these people in particular, counsel, would like to honor for his contributions to the city by teaching most of the city how to ski, and that's Russ Fraz. Russ has decided that he is going to retire from the Carolina Show Ski Team. He's left it in pretty good hands. We're very happy about that. And he's going to get involved in some more adventures for himself. So the city would like to present to Russ an appreciation for the dedication and service to the Carolina Show Ski Team and improvements to the quality of life to the residents of Tegucay. Russ Fraz, do you want me to tell you the dates? 1995 to 2015. Russ?
(applause).
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Would you like to get two minutes on the microphone and then shake the rest of council's hands?
Yes, I would. Uh...
Time is on, if you don't have that.
I know. That's why I said two. Uh, got somebody that does some nice work around here, you know? My wife really set me up bad, or good. It's really been a pleasure, and for something that just sort of happened, it's really turned out to be pretty cool. And as much as I miss doing what I was doing, and maybe there'll be some times I can go back out and still be a show-off, it's come a time that, it just comes a time. And it's been a great, without, certainly without the city of Tegucay being involved, it would have never happened. Pushing those docs through this past couple of years and going through that whole process was incredible. It has taught me some lessons that I'm going to be using here in the next, in my next venture, which we hope to be as successful as this team. And there's a lot of good people out there doing their things on Friday night and on Monday night, and, you know, so it'll keep on going. So appreciate everybody's help in this community, and especially the council and my family that's put up with me for all that time. And, man, when you go down to the Fourth of July and you think that it just started with just a little old ski show, and now here we are. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Russ.
(applause). I guess I can't step back now. Thank you very much.
Good job, man.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number six on the agenda is the unfinished business, which is the second reading of an ordinance to amend the ordinance 471 regarding the 2014-15 TCUD budget. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council. As the mayor said, this is the second reading of ordinance of the current fiscal year, TCUD I budget. As we have received notifications, proper notifications from city of Rock Hill and the town of Fort Mill in regards to their rate increases that took effect July 1, we are, this ordinance envisions passing that rate increase through to our customers. We would ask for council's favorable consideration at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I motion to approve the second reading of ordinance to amend ordinance 471 regarding the fiscal year 2014-2015 TCUD budget.
I have a motion by Ron Kirby. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Lambic Larson. Any discussion? Charlie, this is just a pass-through. This is what we're getting from Rock Hill and Fort Mill, and we're just passing it on.
That is correct.
And it's TCUD I.
It's only TCUD I.
Only I affected at this time.
Correct. That is correct.
Any other council comments? There being none, call a question. All in favor, saying with saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Item number seven on the agenda, under new business, is the introduction of a first reading of an ordinance regarding the Fifth Amendment. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, as stated moments ago during the public hearing, this ordinance and the agreement that is attached to the ordinance is to do a two-year extension on the Gardendale Development Agreement, taking its sunset from March 31, 2016 to March 31, 2018. And we would ask for council's favorable consideration at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction of the first reading of an ordinance regarding the Fifth Amendment to the Gardendale Development Agreement.
I have a motion by Chris Lambic Larson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ron Kirby. Any council discussion?
That just scared me when you said Fifth Amendment and left out Gardendale a minute ago. I thought we were getting out there.
Any other council discussion? There being none, call a question. All in favor, saying with saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Item number seven B on the agenda is the Planning Commission recommendation. Susan Britt? They say it's you.
Thank you. The Planning Commission has recommended unanimously to approve the zoning request for our tax map 650010101 as Stonecrest PDD, RHD.
Thank you, Susan. Counsel, entertain a motion.
I have one.
Oh. Why do I have here requested action?
Yeah. Hearing Planning Commission recommendation. That's it.
That's it.
Okay.
Now we're C.
Because my numbers aren't right. Seven C, that paper thing. Introduction to the first reading of an ordinance to amend tax map number 650-01-01-001 and rezone to Stonecrest PDD, RHD. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Members of council. Again, this is the introduction and first read. This parcel, as council remembers, was discussed at length at your last council meeting. Everything is still the same, other than the zoning, and this is, this would be the appropriate zoning for this product. It will be forty, up to forty-five, forty-five patio homes. The proposed builder developer is looking to do age-targeted, and I believe approximately 30% of the project is being left as open space, natural and disturbed open space, greenway, that type thing. So very excited about this product, and hopefully council is too.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to annex tax map number 650-01-01-001.
I have a motion by Ron Kirby. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Lambic Larson. Any council discussion? Call a question. All in favor, saying with saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Item number seven D on the agenda is the introduction of the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Stonecrest PDD. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Members of council. As the previous item is now rezoning that parcel for Stonecrest PDD, RHD, it is necessary to amend the Stonecrest PDD to include this parcel, and that's what this ordinance, that's what this ordinance does. We would ask for council's favorable consideration at this time.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor and Members of council, motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend the Stonecrest PDD to include tax map 6500101001 and to rezone that parcel as Stonecrest PDD-RHD.
I have a motion by Jen Stalford. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Lambic Larson. Any council discussion?
Yes. Charlie, on the amendment to Stonecrest PDD, there's no numbers related to that. I mean, I know the development agreement's the only thing that had amendments and numbers, but the PDD, there's not a number that goes with that.
That's correct.
I mean, since there was 26 amendments to the development agreement.
Development agreement is done. Yes, sir.
Any other council discussion? There being none, call a question. All in favor, saying with saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Item number seven E. What's going on with me tonight? Seven E, new business, 2015 C-Fund Award. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Members of council. On April 15th, 2015, we did receive notification from York County awarding the city $210,273.40 for the resurfacing of Silver Fox, Tilagi, Spanish Wells, Kittredge Bay, and Heron Run. Following the city's procurement procedures, these projects were duly advertised and sealed bids were received. The low bidder for, the lowest qualified bidder for these projects is Blythe Construction Incorporated in the amount of $171,501.05. So obviously, a good bit less than what we're approved for. We will be able to recoup our, the engineering fees involved with this as well. So your title, yeah, what we're asking for tonight is just the bid award for Blythe Construction. As we close out that project and receive reimbursements back from York County, we'll try to target potentially other areas that we may be able to add on to try to fully maximize the approved funding.
Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award the 2015 C-Funds projects to Blythe Construction Incorporated in the amount of $171,501.05 and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary contracts in order to issue a notice to proceed.
I have a motion by Chris Lambic Larson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer Stalford. Any council discussion? There being none, call a question. All in favor, saying with saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Item number seven...
Mr. Mayor, just got a text that we're not on TV live. Sorry.
That's all right. Apologize for that.
Oh, wait a minute. It's got you guys on it, not me. That's fine with me.
Oh.
It's a former council person just texted me.
All right. So we'll move forward, I guess. Ron, would you like us to move over a little bit?
No, I'm okay. I'll speak up if I have an issue.
We apologize for that. We have someone else operating the AV equipment for us today because, I don't know if you know, but we should have prayed for him as well. Tim Gillette had some bypass surgery about a week ago. He's doing well. He's home. From what I understand, he's driving his wife crazy, and hopefully soon we'll get the picture of what Tim looks like now after his bypass surgery, because he no longer has a beard. So that'll be interesting. We're going to move on to item number seven F, under new business, which is the purchase agreement for 2216 Gold Hill Road. City Manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Members of council. Tonight before you is a necessary purchase agreement. If council chooses to approve, this would allow the city to purchase the property that is immediately adjacent to City Hall, as you're coming inbound just before City Hall, currently owned by the Suites. And I will turn it back over to council at this point.
Thank you, Charlie. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor and Members of council, I'd like to motion to approve the purchase agreement for 2216 Gold Hill Road in the amount of $220,000.
I have a motion by Jen Stalford. Do I have a second?
Go ahead. Second.
Second by Ron Kirby. Any council discussion? There being none, call a question. All in favor, saying with saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Item number eight on the agenda is the city manager's report. Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mayor and Members of council. Just a few things tonight. Obviously, since we've last met, Fourth of July, I think was a tremendous success. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kirby, hats off to you guys for your efforts in working with the Community Relations Committee. Thank you to those volunteers, as well as Joey Bluth and from staff, our maintenance staff, our public safety staff, working all day. I've heard nothing but great things. Fireworks were great. The weather held off for us. I think when I started asking about the impending weather forecast, I was told it doesn't rain on our parade by the mayor, but it was a great time, so another successful Fourth of July. We, actually, all of us just attended, just returned from the Municipal Association Annual Conference. Got an email today that there were over 1,200 participants from around the state. It was great interacting with, I know I enjoyed really interacting with my peers, as I'm sure council did. So another great annual meeting put on by the Municipal Association. Let's see. Those that follow us on social media, as well as the, in the regular media, probably saw the press release, but I'd like to personally thank our police department, especially Lieutenant Vince Holland, Sergeant Shane Bell, under Chief Parker's guidance, as well as the York County Sheriff's Department for their hard work in identifying and apprehending the several suspects in the string of robberies in the Lakewood area. Those guys worked tirelessly. I really appreciate the Sheriff's Department and their assistance with it to be able to swiftly bring that, bring that to a head, bring it to a close. So thank you to those folks. As the mayor just mentioned, Tim Gillette had triple bypass surgery last, not last Thursday, I guess it was a week ago Thursday. And, yeah, so it was, it's been a little over a week now. He's home recuperating. I talked to him this afternoon. He starts sounding like his old self again, ready to, itching to get back out of the house and return to work. Told him, take your time, slow down, but he is doing well. Chief Samansky is recuperating from another shoulder surgery. Looking forward to getting him back as soon as we can, but glad that he is on the mend and has his, has, I think, now both shoulders fixed. The Fort Mill-Tegucay Day, the community breakfast, is being held August 4th at Pleasant Noel Elementary School at 8:00 AM. Sylvia will take care of getting council registered for that. Just email her and let her know whether you're attending or not. Last but not least, we had talked a little bit about doing a budget workshop on July 30th, after spending some time back in the office with our finance director today. Would like to see if we could move that from that Thursday to the next Monday, which would be August 3rd, first Monday of the month. It just gives us a few extra days to really tighten up the numbers and everything before, and get it to you guys, and plenty of time for y'all to review before we actually do the workshop on August 3rd. Does that date work for everybody?
I think you brought that up before, but there were two, I can be there, but there was two council that couldn't.
I know, I know Dottie's out, but I didn't know if anybody...
I thought that was the evening for the TCUD II improvements.
It is.
I'd like to attend that.
Okay.
What time is the TCUD II improvement?
6:30. It'll be over with by 7:00.
So then can we do the budget workshop around 7:30?
It's going to be a very short presentation from our engineers.
Can we do the budget workshop around 7:30 then?
Sure.
Okay.
If that works for everybody.
Does that work for you, Jen?
Eliminating July 30th, correct.
That's correct. Yes.
And at 7:30 down here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any problems with that? We're good? Okay.
Okay. And that is, and is the last thing I had, is Ms. Stalford just mentioned, on August 3rd, and we have sent out notifications, and is a required, just a public meeting. It's not a council meeting. It's not a public hearing on the SRF projects. It's the sewer rehabilitation projects on TCUD II. Both of our engineers, Joe McGogan and Joel Wood, will be here, and they will talk through the work that is currently out for bid. We actually have a pre-bid conference tomorrow morning with the interested contractors that are going to be putting bids out. Bid opening is scheduled for August 11th, and we hope that at your September meeting, we will be bringing you information to do a bid award that'll allow us to close on the SRF loan, and then I can give notice to proceed, and we can get people working and start fixing the system.
Is that meeting here, or is that meeting upstairs?
That meeting will be here.
Okay.
And will there be a question-answer period? I've been asked that already.
I believe there is a, it's not really a question-answer, but a public comment-type period at the end. Obviously, any questions that do come up, we will do our best to try to answer those, but it's really more of a, the intent of the meeting is just, is more for us to share with the public, this is the work that's going to go on. And we have received the permit to construct from SED Hack for those projects.
Any questions, Charlie? Are you thinking about getting a banner to hang in front of City Hall that's got a red cross on it? We seem to be missing...
It's actually ordered.
It's ordered.
Yes.
So we're going to be hanging the red cross in front of the City Hall.
We've turned into a little bit of a mask, mash unit down there.
Yeah. It's getting a little scary. Item number nine on the agenda, public comments. Are there any public comments? You know the routine. Step to the podium, state your name, address, and the clock will start.
Name is Joe Soprano. I live on Scullers Run. When I heard the numbers TCUD II, I brought to mind a water pressure problem that my house is particularly experiencing, but it's not constant. So is there something going on that we should know about, the public should know about? Pressure is not always the same all the time, like it used to be.
Right.
It used to be always constant.
Right.
It seems like early in the morning and dinnertime, that pressure goes way down.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't changed anything. I mean, those are peak flow times, but we are closing the end of this month on the loan. Council approved the financing with BB&amp;T on the water booster pump stations where we'll be joining those two systems. We're hoping that work's going to get started on that in the next 30 days or so. All the pumps have been ordered and things like that. The contractor's waiting on materials to arrive so that they can get started. It will most certainly help, but we, we're not doing anything with the system that would cause, cause it to be any different than what it was prior to us owning, but...
It never was a problem.
Okay.
I mean, people came to my house and stayed overnight and said, "The pressure's terrific in this house." I said, "What's constant like that?" Now, just the last month or so. I called TCUD II. They came over, and they said, "Call them when we're experiencing this," but it's at dinnertime.
Right.
I'm not going to call them at dinnertime.
Right.
I don't think anybody can come. So I'm just wondering if there's something going on that...
Not that we're aware of, Joe. Yeah.
Make sure.
Okay.
This TCUD meeting is for the sewers, so it has nothing to do with...
That's correct. It's strictly on the sewer rehabilitation.
Thank you, Joe. Any other public comments?
My name is Bill Morgan. I live on Point Clear Drive. I have a situation. I purchased a jet ski, and I keep it at the end of my driveway. I understand from reading the information from the city and also in talking to the police department that that's not allowed. It seems a little bit ridiculous to me to put my jet ski in the garage and park my car in the driveway. And that's fine, but I can't put my jet ski in the driveway. That seems a little out of balance. And I'd like comments, or I'd like for the, the council to consider making exceptions for jet skis so that we can keep them out of the way. I can back both of my cars out of the garage with the jet ski there, but if I put a car there, I can't get the other one out without moving the first one. This is a private drive. It's not part of the common area. It's not anything that is owned by the city. It's part of my property. So I, I would ask council to consider that as being something that might be an amendment to that restriction.
Council, any comments or feelings on that?
Mr. Morgan, I've been here 22 years, and we've, we've dealt with this on and off. And we tried to allow that and got, it got taken advantage of other property owners in storing things. And it's kind of hard to, I'm a jet ski owner and a boat owner. I can't keep mine at my house, okay? And I can't use the garage because the wife has a fit if I use the garage, okay? So I'm, I'm understanding what you're saying. I'm not speaking on behalf of council. I'm just telling you my opinion. It's just very difficult for us to make that kind of exception. Everybody has something just a little different, just a pop-up camper, just this. So it's very difficult, but I appreciate your concern.
I guess just to echo with what Ron was saying, several years ago, we changed the, the ordinance to allow you to park your boat in your driveway during the summer months, and that got taken advantage of. So we had to restrict that a little bit, and now we have a permit that you can, you can get for 72 hours to park your boat. But as, as Ron was saying, you give an inch and some people take a yard. And unfortunately, you know, there are people, it's not, it's not a problem for you, but it could be a problem for your neighbors around not liking the way it looks. So that's, that's what the problem comes down.
Jen, anything?
I appreciate staff now having that form available online, so it allows people to get it.
Kudos to Katie and PD for putting that together.
That way, people at work or whatever can get it really easily. That's great.
Chris, anything?
No, I, I think that I'm unfamiliar with Mr. Morgan's situation, and he is in an isolated area. He doesn't, you know, his driveway is down. You can't hardly see it, to be, to be honest with you. Probably doesn't bother anybody, you know? How, how they saw it was beyond me to, to... But I think what, uh, Councilman Kirby was saying, and the mayor was, some people put them right in their front yard. Just, it becomes an eyesore, and then they get, you know, forever, you know? And it's a shame because people like you that are trying to follow the rules as well are getting hindered by this, and I can only apologize, but we will take a look at it.
Yes, sir.
Tom Isley, 3028 Point Clear. I don't know if it's been discussed. I travel a lot, so I'm not around that often, but I'm concerned about now the postal situation. Is there anything going on about that since the postal route is left? I mean, I drive through the countryside. I'll go through Liberty Hill, which may have 10 houses, and they have their own post office. We're a city, and now we have to go all the way out to 77 or Fort Mill. And is there any consideration, or is there any way that we could get even a small post office here? A post office box? I've gotten to drop letters behind the old postal route, and there'll be letters coming out of the box.
Yeah.
You can't even get letters in there anymore.
Yeah, that's true.
So, I mean, we are a city. We should have a post office. That's one of my concerns. And the other concern is, you guys can talk amongst yourselves or if something's going on, let me know. On the way out today at our new light, one car was turning right, coming by the fountain. That stopped 15 or 20 cars just crossing in front. And on the way home, the same thing happened. One car turns right, and it sets off the light for everybody to stop coming in and out of T.G.A.K. Can that be timed different, or let a right turn, make a right turn without tripping the light?
You know what? If you could, you're probably going to have to put a di, write this down, a little diagram. So I'm, I don't see how you could come, if you're coming in the city and making a right, you'd have to be going into City Hall, right?
He's, he's referring to people turning off the shoreline.
Going straight. It's the people turning at the fountain going out.
Going out. I got you. And that's, that's...
You're making a right-hand turn, and that trips the light and makes everybody stop.
Really? Okay.
I could say one thing, Mr. Mayor. Tom, if you'd addressed DOT, I'm sure council would be appreciative of anything you can tell. That's all I got to say.
Well, we could easily... Charlie, would you check with SEDOT what the timing is on that light? And if there's something that we can do about it?
Sure.
And I will, not being smart, we've, we've asked a lot of things. Anyway, the light's supposed to have been there years ago, and we didn't want it.
Right. I don't, I don't, the light doesn't bother me.
I know, no, I know what you're saying. I stopped yesterday, I mean, this morning, same thing.
I'm, I'm sure it's not the first and last time we're going to hear about the post office. It is the first, but...
Oh, just the first?
To council, to council, but I'm sure, I see people are, are going, "Yeah, man, let's get it." So that's something there we should consider. Let's, you know, let's see how to do it. I don't know how, how you do it.
It's a long ways to go to Fort Mill.
Yeah, yeah.
My next-door neighbor who has a hard time getting...
Mr. Isley, if I can, I can, I've had conversations with Todd...
Hawk?
Todd Hawk, who's the postmaster in Fort Mill. He is actually looking to try to identify property within or adjacent to T.G.A.K. For a potential post office.
Great.
So they are, they are looking into it. They have not identified the properties yet, but they are looking into it, and they've asked, and they've had some dialogue with, with, with us. At least some dialogue at this point.
My next-door neighbor, he just went out today. Has a hard time even walking. His wife is in bed, and he had a registered letter, and he had to go all the way to Fort Mill to get it.
Well, you got the one, you, you see the new one down here? Is that, is that familiar with you, or?
Yeah, that's the postal route, the new...
The postal route? Yeah, I know where that is, but that's a long ways out, too.
Yeah.
So we had to drive all the way for a registered letter, which was Republican propaganda or whatever it was. It was just junk mail.
Yeah, yeah.
So we had to drive all the way there, and like I said, I've gone through, you know, you've traveled the back roads, and you'll see this little tiny post office and hardly any houses there, and here we are, a city without a post office.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other council, any other comments?
Point Clear Drive seems to be the street tonight. Art Farak, I live on Point Clear. Hadn't thought about this until this gentleman brought up the post office. I haven't heard this topic brought up in years, but I live at 23055. There are five houses, 230 something or other. Across the street is 4,000. Across the street is 3,000. Hardly a month goes by that I'm out in the yard that some poor delivery person doesn't stop by and say, "Can you please help me find such and such an address?" I'm reminded of when a friend of ours years ago had great difficulty with the ambulance because the ambulance couldn't find his house. Is there any consideration to getting rid of the, in my opinion, ridiculous archaic street numbering system in the old section of T.G.A.K. So that it's like a usual city. When you drive down the street, the odd numbers are on one side. The even numbers are on the other side, and you don't go around a circle to find the houses.
The addressing council is not set by the city. It is set by the county addressing with EOC. But we can certainly ask them what that looks like, that process looks like.
Thank you, Charlie.
Joe Soprano, Scullers Run. The post office came up, and I think we have a post zip code, 29708.
Correct.
If you give your address to a company, they'll look it up and say, "No, you live in Fort Mill."
Correct.
My wife gets really annoyed. "No, I live in T.G.A.K." And I think that the post office dictates what our zip code is, and we can have that 29708 if the post office is in T.G.A.K. That's what I was told.
Joe recently had a conversation with Mick Mulvaney about us potentially getting our own zip code because he did the same thing in Indianland. And he was told by the postal service that we do not warrant our own zip code because of our population yet.
We don't warrant because of our population?
Right. Because we don't have a population that warrants our own zip code.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Closed public comments. Onto item number 10 is council comments. Ron Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, former council Harper, glad to see you here and glad you're back here as a full-time resident again from your contract work. Always good to see you. Tim Gillette, I did talk to him after you mentioned his beard, George, and he, he sounded really great. And I mentioned his beard, and he said, "I gotta go." And so I could tell there's going to be an issue with him. The mass meeting, thank you, Katie and Sylvia for, for lining things up. Some great classes, some great people. Good, good to shake hands and mingle with people and learn what's going on in other cities and what things we may be faced with. And I appreciate the city allowing us to do that. July 4th celebration was great, as always. Went through with no issues that I'm aware of, and no, no one, nobody was harmed or no damage to any properties. And Mayor and his family and some other young people appreciate you up with the automobiles. As the mayor would tell you, it seems like it takes three days. It's just not convenient that every, every dealership's got a convertible available. But thank you for that. Hope all will come out for the State of City and go ahead and make a reservation to, for a State of City breakfast. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Ron. Chris?
I want to thank everybody for their condolences for my father's passing. We've gotten a tremendous amount of support from the staff and the people in the city, and I thank everyone, especially my wife Kate and my two sons, Chris and Tanner. They did a tremendous job, and I appreciate that. And also, we did attend the mask event this last weekend, and I have to say, it was very informative. It brought us all together as a council, and I, I look forward to the next one. I enjoyed that. Thank you for letting us do that, and Katie for all your help to putting that together.
Thank you, Chris. Jen?
I was just going to say that I was really glad to see how under budget the, for the, for the Sea Funds, the bid award, and that the two were so close, under $2,000 difference. So it's not like we're going low cheap bidder. It's, we're, and the person that previously had done a lot of work is one of those. So that was really great. We could spend it somewhere else we need to in the city. I just wanted to mention that the beautification committee is selling t-shirts and hats at all the city concerts, and they've asked that I just share that they appreciate all the support because that goes right towards the Living Memorial Gardens Maintenance. And again, the Women's Club, they're very grateful. We're grateful that they put forward the funds for the Little Library. So if you haven't checked it out, the Little Free Library is in the gardens, and it's fantastic. It has kids books, adult books, anything. It's a free exchange, so it's a lot of fun.
Thank you, Jen. Most of my comments have already been taken, but I do have one question. Openings on committees. We still have some committees out there that, that we have openings on. Can we push something out to the community saying that this committee is open for this position or that position in the next week or so? And hopefully, we can get some applications in for the next council meeting so we can fill those spots. That's all I have. So at this point, I'm going to go to item number 11, which is an executive session pursuant to Section 30-4-70A1 of the South Carolina Code to discuss employment and contractual arrangements as it relates to municipal court. Counsel, that is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris Lambic Larson. Any discussion? There being none, call the question. All in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're in executive session.
It's for you.